Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session on this regular meeting Tuesday, December 5th. It's good to see you all here this morning. We apologize for the short delay. We're going to get started because there's a pretty good bid on the agenda this morning. We would let stand and go to the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given us. We used up yesterday. We're not sure about tomorrow, but we're here today. Be with us in our decision making, our understanding, God. Help us, Lord, to show wisdom and prudence over every decision we make. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Mr. Morone, is there anything that needs to be added to the agenda other than what was published?
No, Mr. Chairman, no changes. Aaron didn't indicate any changes to me, so I think we're good to go today.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda as it's published and advertised?
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, the next is approval of minutes and payment of county bills?
Mr. Chairman, since there's no approval of minutes, I'll approve the payment of the county bills.
All right, we have a motion to approve paying the county bills by Commissioner Ward.
My second.
Second by Commissioner Amerson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right. This, next on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Richard Louis Lewis. Please come forward, sir. Ms. Courtney, I'll turn it over to you.
This is a resolution of appreciation to Richard Louis Lewis, whereas Richard Louis Lewis has been a great asset to Franklin County, starting out as an EMT in 2010, then progressed to a paramedic in 2012, appointed as a captain in 2016, and has been EMS director since 2019, devoting nine years of service to the Franklin County community. And whereas he has also applied for and received various grants, which assisted him in providing community training programs, such as the CPR education and emergency responder training for fire departments, and he has also improved EMS billing and collections, has improved relationships with surrounding counties to improve mutual aid, develop a quality assurance program to ensure high-quality patient care, and much more. The Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is greatly appreciative of all that Richard Louis Lewis, of his time and efforts in creating a positive environment that puts the needs of the county and patients before the needs of his own. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to sincerely thank Richard Louis Lewis for his dedication and years of service he has given to Franklin County and this community.
Speech.
Thank you. This is a surprise, and it means a lot to me that the county is recognizing me in this way. But I do want to say that the crews are the reason that I was able to do anything I was able to do.
Right.
The only thing I really done was give them the opportunity to perform at their best. I do think the county, in the future, if any of you need anything from me, I'll always be here. We put in a lot of work over the past nine years to improve this service, and we're going to keep moving forward, and the service is going to keep improving as we go forward. And I really do appreciate everything you've done for me and the service.
Thank you, Louis. Turner Schuler, do we need to pass this resolution by motion and vote?
I would, yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous for. Louis, I'll say this. I know what you just said, and I don't discredit it, but leadership is about enabling. And it's not about what you can get done. If it's about what you can get done, then if somehow, or any one person, if they're taken out of the way, then what's going to happen to the rest of the organization? But leadership truly is about enabling those around you to do better and to do things that maybe they don't even know they can do yet. You know what I mean? So that's what you've fostered, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners want to say anything?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to extend my appreciation to you. I know you and I haven't always seen eye to eye when it comes to certain things because we're both medical, but I do know that you have provided a lot to this county. You've gotten equipment, you've got defibrillators, you've gotten new vehicles grants for us. You've saved this county and our taxpayers a lot of money by doing the extra legwork to provide and try to go out for monies that were available so that we didn't have to use our ad valorem or taxpayer money to provide certain equipment and ambulances to the county, in addition to everything else that you've done, and help with billing. And I know you stand behind your crew, and your crew makes you who you are in terms of, but as Chairman said, you know, it's a reflection, your crew's a reflection of you and your leadership. So thank you and to your crew for providing services to this county, and I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. If you want to say something else, that'll...
I was waiting. Louis, we didn't have very long to work together, but I can tell you one thing. I've been around some pretty solid leaders in my life through the military and all that, and you're one of those that leads from the front, and I'm pretty sure your crew can acknowledge that. It's our laws, but if you ever want to come home.
I'd definitely keep that in mind. And remember, I'll always be an asset for Franklin County. Anything you need, I will always be here.
Well, we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're always welcome in Franklin County, Louis.
Thank you.
You have took our ambulance service up to the bar, and for that, I am very grateful to you. And don't you feel bad about going out there and getting you a better job, to better pay, better yourself and your family? Because family's what comes first.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood.
You may be glad I ain't got too much of a voice, but I... That's why Commissioner Anderson was looking at me like he was.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind, the CEO, David Walker, addressing?
Good morning, Commissioners, and everybody that's here today. You know, we recognize Louis, you know, as a leader. I always tell him that, you know, he's the Micah Jordan of EMS for us, but we have a LeBron in the waiting. I like to joke with him as well. But Louis really has, you know, has a partnership, you know, with the hospital or clinics, you know. This is one of the first times since I've been the CEO for four and a half years. Louis and I probably came in right around the same time, that the hospital and EMS and the clinics are working hand in hand, and that's a tribute to Louis', you know, heart, you know, for this particular community. And so we're a big fan of Louis. You know, we will keep him, you know, in ear distance so we can, he can continue to help mentor, you know, our plan for EMS. And like I said, you know, he thought outside the box. When I first came in, the CEO asked him, I said, "Just think outside the box," you know, as an EMS, you know, director. How can we make a small county have big ideas, like a big county, and just think outside the box, forget about the red tape, and bring me your ideas? And he did it. And so we attribute that to Louis. We thank you for your service, and thank you for your continued support for EMS. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I got one more thing. In addition, Louis, you did have a program where you would go in homes of people that could not make it to their doctor's office. So that's another asset in the community that you started, and I know a lot of people like that and are appreciative of that program as well. Is your replacement here in the audience today?
Oh, the potential applicant is.
Applicant, okay.
Yeah, the position hasn't closed out yet, so it's not confirmed. But the individual that I've been preparing has the same ideas as I do, is really strong in the community paramedic, which is a program you're speaking of, and I have a lot of faith that he's going to exceed what I've been able to do. So you're going to be in good hands.
Thank you.
I know that was a really big deal, what Commissioner Ward's speaking of, when we were all building the plane and flying at the same time. People referred to it as a COVID outbreak. That was a really big deal for all of our residents to not, especially at times when you didn't really know that. When it first started, my God, they thought everybody was going to drop as soon as they got it. You know what I mean? It was overwhelming. So being able to go into homes and keep residents where they weren't having to be exposed and be around each other, it was definitely outside the box thinking. It was something that was really good for our residents, and I'll always be appreciative of that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ward, my husband was one that used those services, and he was on white band for ten and a half months. And when he was during that time, Louis would send, I caught the chase vehicle out there and make sure, and he had a doctor's appointment right there, and they were there and everything, and it really worked out good, and that's a good service to have. For some of our people in Franklin County, I know my husband was glad he didn't have to try to get up and get out, you know? So that was good.
Before he walks away, Commissioners, picture time. Do I want the CEO to join in?
He wrangled us?
Wait, who's covering the county wire?
All right, you ready? One, two, three. All right.
Take care, guys. Thank y'all.
Mr. Morone, the only public comment I see that's turned in is one about a zoning change?
It is.
So that's not for now, it's for later, correct?
Well, that isn't actually on our report. That's a...
Okay, so it's for now, then?
Yeah, it has to be for now, because he's been working with Courtney for almost a month now. So he finally, they finally worked it out. He decided that he wanted to talk today.
Okay. His name, I guess, is Michael Martin? Is he in the audience, or is he by zoom? Okay. All right, head forward, please. State your name for the record. You have five minutes, sir.
Michael Martin. I'm the chairman of the board of the Bungalows by the Gulf. I'm not a wealthy developer here trying to get you to bend the rules to make me more wealthy. I was going to open in prayer, but you did a great job, Commissioner Ward, so I don't need to do that. The Bungalows by the Gulf was originally developed as a resort hotel, and then it collapsed with the 2008, you know, financial real estate business, and came back out. The current owners right now, we have 37 units, and I would say probably 32 are at least residents or part-time residents. And so the whole complex has changed. It's no longer has the intention of the original developers. So, and I have contacted all 37 owners. All 37 owners would like it to be residential. It's going to help in a lot of ways. Number one, insurance-wise, we have a lot more insurance providers. Commercial insurance is very high, and also it would give the owners the privilege of homestead exemption, and it's the right thing to do. It is no longer a resort hotel. It is a residential condominium. So I'm here to ask you if you would give us the privilege of changing from commercial to residential. Courtney and Mark Carrington have been very helpful. Mark has suggested an R5. Now, with the R5, which Michael Schuler has noted, a parking, and the R5 has a parking restriction that's way too high. I drove around St. George Island. Man, none of those buildings have parking like we do. We have 105 designated parking areas. And the only thing I can figure out is the declaration of the zoning R5 did not compensate for the building being up on pylons. So we have all this parking underneath. So what I'm asking you is if you would move forward helping our complex, and Commissioner Jones, I ask you first, if you could support, if you will support, our changing to R5 with a variance or a special exception, which you can make, so that, therefore, you don't break the law. So do I have your help on that?
What you have right now is public comment.
That's correct.
Is that everything you wanted to say?
Well, I'd like to know if you have...
That's not the way this situation works, sir.
Okay, so I...
You can apply for anything you want through the Board of Adjustment and Varyance.
Okay.
And upon their approval, it would come to us. And if we're going to do anything, it's going to be debated and known publicly. We're not, we can't commit to what you want in public, so that's not happening.
Okay, that's fine. Well, if I would ask you this. Jessica, Cheryl, Otis, and Noah's not here today. But if you would, I'll go through the process. I'll get with Courtney and Mark.
Excuse me, Mr. Martin. Mr. Noah Lockley passed away.
I did not know that.
Yeah, you need to be up on your history about Franklin County. He passed away about...
I'm a new resident here, Cheryl, and I love the county, and you guys are doing a great job. And like I said, I would have opened in prayer, but you did a great job, Commissioner Jones. So if you will, put this in your thoughts, because I'm going to get with Courtney, and I'll get with Mark Carrington, and I will file the necessary paperwork to have a decision made on it. Do you have any questions to me?
No, sir, not at all. This is public comment.
Okay. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate all your hard work, because you do have a lot of decisions to make, and I just hope we can straighten this out and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was the only one I had, Mr. Morone. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Up next, Mr. Howard Neighbors. Roads and Bridges Superintendent, come on down. You're the next contestant.
How y'all doing, Commissioners?
Good morning.
I've got no action items this morning. I got, well, we have been fighting the rain for the last couple of weeks. A little bit in Appalachia, especially the east end of Caribao, Duval, and half of McIntyre, we had to close on County Roads flooded. And also on 67, where they're working on the coves and the, that Buckhead over there, which they had the west side of the ditch, north side of the bridge right there, closed. They had a bunch of dirt and stuff, had all that blocked off. So we had major flooding in that area Saturday night, late Saturday night, about 10:30. And so anyway, we got signs and stuff up, and we worked with that area. We got up with the people, so they got pumps. They're now trying to pump that one side of that ditch. Yes, ma'am, I did. He said they're going to leave them twenty-four hours until the water got down.
Well, we got some more coming this weekend. But that is the main creek that runs into O'Clockney River there.
Pools a lot of water through that area, a lot.
Pools all that from the west and comes right in through there and goes on into the O'Clockney River up there.
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure they know, because I tell you what, thank goodness, and I want to thank the Sheriff's Department, everybody that responded. It could have been a bad situation. See, over there in the northeastern part of the county, we got about nine inches of rain. We got that nine they said we were going to get.
A lot of rain.
And on top of that, you had those, both sides of the cupboards had the sheet metal piling that was making it flow right down sixty-seven. And it was like ten inches deep. Yeah, it was a dangerous situation. And you got a cupboard there being, trying to be replaced. But anyway, thank goodness, our road department, the Sheriff's Department was on top of it. And Michael gave work, too.
Yeah, but there was a lot of water that went through there, Commissioner. So that drains a lot of water. Not only from the north, and the south, also from the west. All that water pulls from that way.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I've got something. Mr. Neighbors, I want to appreciate you, tell you and your crew, I appreciate you guys moving those heavy benches. I know those weren't easy to move.
Yeah, they aggravate, but they tough. Because we moved them probably four or five different times, but they still together.
Still together.
I appreciate it. And I feel like they'll get really, really good use in where you relocated them. And thank you to Chairman Jones for allowing me to swipe them from his district and put in mine.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, they were getting abused where they were. They weren't really being-
Yeah, people wanting to fall asleep on them for some reason or another.
All kinds of problems.
Walking and getting tired, I guess.
Mr. Neighbors.
Yes, sir.
Going into December, did we stop doing any Friday work? I'm just looking at-
We have. We quit the Friday work. Yes, sir. And we still, which I know y'all got the paper there, still showed inmates. For the last month or so, I think we had five this morning in total. So we was getting twelve or thirteen until no accident took place with the contraband stuff, so.
Yeah. Well, no matter what it is, if there's a way to try to find out how to do it, they're going to do that every time.
They are very slick. You got that right.
Nothing we can do about that, sir.
Yes, sir. And I got a couple of other things. December the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth, which would be Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, we're going to be holding a safety and flagging class. So I have half the crew in it, but the other half of the crew will still be working.
Sounds good. Anyone else have anything?
Just following up from our conversation yesterday.
Yeah, we took care of it and dug that stuff out. Which, that's just, area is just so low in there. And a lot of water stands there. But we dug the end of the cupboards going out and dug where we had it blocked off, we dug it out. So the water went running, but I don't know how much of it drained.
Given you got more coming, too.
Yeah, got more rain coming, that's correct.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Mr. Howard, I want to ask you, I know you guys did a very good thing. I think it's going to help on Gulf Beach Drive where there were ruts on the side of the road.
Yes, sir.
You know, went and filled it in with some milled asphalt. But I would ask you to go back and at least tamp it down. So the, because the way it is right now, everything on the edge of the road is higher than the road. So the road is just going to be filled with water.
Yes, sir.
You know, it needs at least be some kind of slope. But don't need to have those big ruts that y'all covered up. That's great. But if we can do something about making sure there's some kind of angle to it.
And I'm glad you brought it up. That, excuse me, that, I want to say First Street, East, West Pine, I meant, and that area right in there, it's just, it's in bad, bad shape. I mean, it's just all cracked and breaking up. So I don't know, maybe sometime we get some more paving done over there. Maybe we can kind of keep that area in mind.
That's part of what's in the plan, if we can ever get to a point of being able to move forward and actually take it out and bid for the whole stormwater project we're doing from third to third.
Okay.
You know, we've been back and forth with Treasury and different parts of this. I think we started on about three years ago.
Yes, sir.
Trying to get it all straightened out and worked out. But I think they've about got it where we're ready to take it out for bids to award it so it can be done.
Okay. And I got one more thing, too. I know some of y'all can't make it. You know, some of you might can, is we have our Christmas cooking and all, which will be on Wednesday, December the twentieth. I think I'm right on that. And Ring Power is going to be doing the cooking. So I'd like all y'all to come, you know, if you can. Michael and Michael Schuler, Michael Moron, y'all sure welcome. You're welcome.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Howard? Sir, thank you and Merry Christmas to you and all your workers.
Thank y'all. Commissioner, Merry Christmas, y'all. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Fonda Davis, Director of Solid Ways, Parks and Recs in Hamilton County.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have one item on my report and two other items that I do not have. Neither request, require action. My first item is employee new hire announcement. The Frank County Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to announce that Jeff Rien and Tajay Rowe has filled the open entry level position. The fact the date started was Monday, December the fourth. So it was three positions in Park and Rec. The other positions have some screening issues right now, but we're working on it. The other two items that I have, the first one is the carcass containers. They are, I'm getting calls about them, that people saying they, they just nasty. We try to dump them regularly. Some is not being used correctly. And also, the employees, when they pulling them, it's making them sick. There's something for you all to think about. And the other issue is, yesterday I got notice that the concession stand in Caribelle, we have been letting some organizations use it. Commissioner Sanders is aware, rented by her. I don't know how, but some drugs was found inside the concession stand yesterday. I don't know if they left it open or no signs of breaking or injury in it. So just want to run that by you all. If somebody called again, I probably would not be allowing them to use it.
You're going to have to limit use. I mean, I don't know any way around it. You've got to limit use to just the Dixie Youth League or whoever, some kind of league or somebody that's going to be responsible for it.
Yeah.
Then you know, made aware of it. You know what I mean?
Right.
If I'm the one responsible for the youth league in Caribelle and there's something found, I'm going to be the one questioned about it.
Yeah. The first thing, they left the lights on all night, probably over the weekend. They went in there and turned them on manual. You know, we had a system where we can just call, make a caller, go online and fix it. But for some reason, they went in there and turned it on manual and the lights ran all weekend, twenty-four seven. Again, the incident yesterday with the drugs. So, but I do whatever I'm told to do. The way I feel about it, I limit the uses.
That's the only thing we can do is limit the use, sir, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I mean, listen, I'm open to discussion, but that's all that I think we can do is limit the use of it.
You were able to intercept the drug though?
Well, Susie went in to check the concession yesterday, and she said she had a loud odor. And she called DOC and they come in. She, marijuana, what she was smelling. And that was marijuana, tobacco, and some other kind of drug.
Well, in the past, if you remember, Fonda, people have been coming out there and using their bathrooms out there for drugs and stuff. I mean, it's the same problem we've got throughout all the parks in Franklin County. We just need to crack down on it.
Right. The sad part about it is, I mean, is no sign of breaking or entering. So to me, it's, you know, I don't know how they got in there.
They've got some kind of information.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. That's fine.
All right. That's all I have for you all this morning.
Anyone else have anything for-
Mr. Fonda, the lights out there at Donington Wilson Park.
Yes.
Are they on a timer? I think we've had that, I think something's wrong. Because I've went by there a few times and it's on like at nine-thirty, ten o'clock. And I mean, there's nobody there, so I don't think anybody done it. But just to let you know, I think something must be-
The timer, we have it set at ten. And again-
What time change, too? I said, we had a time change as well, so.
Yeah, but I know you'll have, as quick as we turn them off, Commissioner, you'll have somebody call and say, well, hey, why you turn the lights off?
No, that's fine. But I mean, it is set at ten. I was thinking it was more like nine since it's getting dark early. I mean, before, obviously, it was, you know, you didn't have very much time. But no, I just, that's fine. I just know I went by there between nine and ten and they was on. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention. And to be honest with you, that was two or three weeks ago. And whenever somebody mentioned lights a while ago, it, my light come on. That's why, so I'm asking you now.
Yeah, and that's another thing, too. Like if it's raining, you know, that timer there, and it's going, the lights still going to be on. No one is using the facility, but the lights will be on. Unlike Veruman and Kendrick, where we can, we can set it and it'll go off.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Maybe we, is that the Musco deal?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like lights in the future.
I feel like a redhead stepchild. They got mine white and mine are burning.
Well, East Point just got them, sir.
Well, yeah, we just got ours.
They didn't use them yet.
Yep.
We're working on it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Davis?
No, I think you, he's, you're the one that got those nice East Point lights, huh? The Christmas decorations, not the banners, but I think I, yeah, we talked to you about that, yeah. So they, I like them. They're very nice. Much better than the old ones that the lights, half of them didn't work. So I like them.
I noticed this morning, I don't know, maybe some of the electrical parts, that plug is not working.
Right.
I know if you would check the night for a minute, one of your audience, but when I come through this morning, it was dark still and a couple wasn't burning.
Okay. Then we'll check that out.
Yeah.
But thank you. I know you took money out of your budget to pay for them, so appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, he did. He was kind of strong-minded.
He was, he was. He didn't want to do it. He's like, oh.
But it does look good, Mr. Davis. I would just thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Anyone else have anything for Mr. Fonda? Sir, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you and all those that work with you. We appreciate all you do.
Yes, sir. And same to you all. I think I can speak for the crew, too. Merry Christmas. And we thank you for your support.
All right, Mr. Jennifer Daniels? That's right, she's at a conference or something.
Yep. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, ma'am.
I'll be filling in for Jenny because she's in Flagler County at a conference right now. We have no action items this morning, but I will highlight a couple of our information items. As of Friday, we are officially out of hurricane season. I know we were excited about that. And I'm hoping none of you are, too. So glad we made it through another season with minimal damage. We also received our mobile command that we purchased from Gulf County that we got approval at the last meeting. It is actually at our office now and it's very beautiful. And we'll be doing some work to try to find some minimal renovations to make it even more functionally appropriate. And then the last information item I wanted to highlight is we do have three new weather stems installed in the county now. We had them installed last Wednesday. And so we have one on Dog Island, another one on St. George Island, and one over at Alligator Point.
Are they all linked to y'all's website?
They should be, yes.
Okay. Okay. Cool. That's good. So that's, we only had two before, didn't we?
We have one at the EOC. We have one on the St. George Island pier. We have one at Island View Park. And the school has one as well, but it's not a part of our contract with them.
Okay. So now we have six instead of three, is what you're saying?
Oh, I forgot. We have a fourth one over at the O'Clockney River.
Okay. Well, good. That's good.
I like looking at this.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Amanda?
Mr. Chairman, yes. As we were discussing earlier with Mr. Neighbors, this highway sixty-seven thing, we know, because you guys sent out your alert. So thank you guys for keeping the community informed when things like that happen. So that our constituents and citizens and even visitors that have that program are aware of what's going on. So appreciate that.
And we're going to stay in touch with Howard all week, make sure, you know, nothing else happens. I know we got more rain coming. And of course, all the rivers, you know, the water's coming down to us. So we'll update our message as we have new information. I know we talked to him this morning. Nothing has really changed. Still got water over on those two roads. And then that's played, that one section of sixty-seven is still a little iffy. But we will update the message as needed throughout the week.
I appreciate it.
That's very helpful. It really is. Anyone else have anything for Ms. Amanda? Thank y'all for everything you do. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You, too. Thank you.
Mr. Dewitt Polus, Mosquito Control Director?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'd like to start off saying I appreciate Mr. Louis and them. I had to utilize their service yesterday with my mom. And I called the ambulances and they were there in five minutes. Got her stabilized, got her Panama C D. She's doing good this morning. So I just want to quickly say that. I appreciate them also. Just informational items, we've, as of now, suspended our adult asylum program. That will, can vary. You know, if it warms up with all the water and stuff, then we can start receiving complaints. We'll go out and take care of those. But we did have a little influx of mosquitoes right towards the end of the season. We'll see with those counts, how they really fluctuated. But other than that, we were, started our inmate down on the east end of the county yesterday. We had two inmates. And Mr. Tucker don't put up with much bull out of them. So he had to call the prison, come get one. So back over this morning with one inmate. So, you know, we're doing the best we can, but they said that's going to improve. But other than that, the rest of it's just informational stuff there for you.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Polus? Do what I do. I want to ask someone. I forgot why Howard was up there, but Howard's still here. I seen a video, and I don't know what we use if we have like beaver, beaver problems, how y'all handle that, other than just manually doing it. But I'll get with y'all. It might be something we want to check into. It was a video advertising something that goes on the end of a tractor excavator or whatever, that you can put into the culvert and open up these arms and then pull everything out. And it would probably make life a whole lot faster for dealing with that kind of stuff. But, you know, I'll get with you guys about it and we'll see. There was no price tag on the video. It was just a, you know what I mean? But I was like, man, that's, that's pretty impressive, what I saw them do. And they, because the problem isn't just the beaver, it's the water that's getting backed up.
That's right. And right now, they're having to use light poles to take the tractor and try to maneuver them around and, you know, push. And of course, that does a little collateral damage on the pipes and stuff. That would be tremendous. Something they could utilize.
But I'll get with you two about it. At least check it out and see if it's worth pursuing.
Okay. And of course, for your information, our holiday, same as the road department, will be off at the same time.
All right. Commissioners, anything else? Mr. Polus, thank you for everything you do on behalf of the county, you and those who work with you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Merry Christmas, you guys. And we appreciate what you do for us.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Eric Lovestrand, City Council, there he is.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't have anything extra for you today, either.
All right. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric? Mr. Eric, the, for it's, they have to postpone something the other day because of weather?
Well, we had our Ag Adventures event going on recently. And one day, I think it was Thursday, and part of Friday, wore rained out. But our Franklin County kids were up there on Monday and had a really, really good event.
Okay. Good. I just thought I remembered seeing something about that. I'm glad they were still able to take part of it. And, you know, anything we can do to keep our kids involved and know that education's not a bad thing in any form they find it in?
Yeah, they really get a good lesson, a bunch of different lessons on different agricultural crops and how they're produced and that Florida produces-
Mr. Eric Lovestrand, City Council, yep, there he is.
Good morning, Commissioners. I don't have anything extra for you today, either.
All right, anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric? Mr. Eric, the, the, for it, they have to postpone something the other day because of weather?
Well, we had our Ag Adventures event going on, um, recently, and one day, I think it was Thursday, and part of Friday, um, were rained out, but our Franklin County kids were up there on Monday and had a really, really good event.
Okay, good, I just thought I remembered seeing something about that, and I'm glad they were still able to take part of it, and you know, anything we can do to keep our kids involved and know that education's not a bad thing in any form they find it in?
Yeah, they really get a good lesson, a bunch of different lessons on different agricultural crops and how they're produced, and that Florida produces things that a lot of folks don't know about.
Yeah, we really do, we really do. Uh, Commissioners, y'all have any questions or concerns for Mr. Eric? Sir, thank you for everything you do on behalf of this county, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from the county commission.
Oh, thank, thank you all, and same to you, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Whitney Roundtree? Franklin County Libraries, good morning, Whitney.
Good morning, Commissioners. Oh, there we go. Our twenty-three, twenty-four state application, um, our state aid application to libraries has been submitted. Our alarms and new cameras have been installed by Vector Security. In a partnership with Disc Village, overdose prevention kits are now available to the public at both library branches. Um, we will be closed December eleventh for Staff Development Day in Wakulla, hosted by Wild. We will be closed December twenty-second through the twenty-fifth for the Christmas holiday, and we'll be, we'll be closed New Year's Day. Um, other than that, we've got a lot of fun holiday stuff planned on the calendar, uh, next Tuesday, we'll be going out and visiting the A B C School pre-K class, uh, we'll be bringing the Grinch. Uh, do you have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Whitney?
Mr. Chairman, I do, Whitney, hey, this is Commissioner Ward, so the Vector Security system has been installed and it's working properly, everything's going okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, at both branches, uh, we got the new campus, the new thermostats, and the alarm system.
Okay, good, and what about?
And thank you, Michael, for helping me coordinate that.
And the fire alarms and all, we got all that?
Uh, well, we had to make a switch with the, using a certain part of the security system for fire detection, and I explained that to you, uh, uh, off record.
Okay.
But what she, what she just kind of blew over, so she can control, uh, she now has a thermostat that's tied to the security system, that she can actually control the A C from her phone, you know, the, the, the temperature, so, you know, and they do that so that when nobody's in the library, she could kind of, you know, switch it, so it's not using up that much power, and then she can have a time, it, it, I think there's a schedule she can set, so two hours prior to the, the library opening, it goes to a certain temperature, whatever she wants it to be.
That's pretty cool.
Very cool, good job, Whitney, very cool.
Yeah, thank you. Good, thank you.
And I think she also has access on her phone to see, look at libraries anytime she wants.
Yeah, that's good, too, I suppose that was good.
Yeah, and, and that, did that include adding some different cameras at the Careville branch?
Oh, yeah.
Cause remember, one was in a weird spot.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, but.
That was a really long discussion with the, with the Vector tech, I mean, manager, yeah.
Okay, that's good, that's all I wanted to know.
As long as we've got coverage and she's got what she needs now, that's all that matters to me.
Yes. All right, Commissioners, y'all have any questions or concerns for Ms. Whitney? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything you do on behalf of Franklin County, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to you and your staff.
You as well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Ted Mostander, interim airport manager?
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. I have, uh, we submitted, uh, routine things there, uh, I'd like to add a couple of items to it, uh, one thing is, uh, Scott has taken the, uh, zero turns to Tallahassee for warranty service and checkup, for annual checkup. And, uh, thanks to Fonda for loaning us a trailer, appropriate trailer, uh, since our small trailer is kind of under the weather. We do have some new T-hanger leaks, thanks to this last water we had, rain we had, and, uh, that's being addressed. One thing I had on my report to you was the, uh, fuel tank for the diesel for use of the equipment. Uh, the reason being, uh, the tank is there existing now, Centric is using it for their equipment, their refueling trucks and their A T Vs. So we had to find a separate source to store our diesel for the more equipment. Again, thanks to Howard and Fonda for their help with the equipment, appreciate it very much. Uh, do you have any questions for me that I could possibly answer?
Mr. Ted, that new tank, where y'all store, where is it being located?
It'll be, uh, at the, uh, beside the existing tank, it's just a five hundred gallon tank with a pump on it.
Yes, sir, I'm worried what you're talking about.
Yeah. And, uh, Michael and John has some things coming up on their agendas, so.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Ted? Mr. Ted, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year from the county.
Thank you, I'll be standing by for anything here, thank you.
Mr. John Collins?
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. There, there's a few different airport items on the agenda today, uh, the first one is task order number twelve for the West Hanger Development Project. A couple months ago, this board approved a funding, funding reallocation, there's about eight hundred thousand dollars for some stormwater work at the airport, um, but through working with the airport board and getting their, their feedback on it, um, they made a recommendation to the board to reallocate those funds towards a hanger development, because right now, there's a pretty substantial waiting list at the airport for T-hangers. And, which is common across the entire panhandle, every airport has a waiting list for their T-hangers, so that's very common. So, um, in order to, you know, really increase the revenue for the county, um, the, um, commission at the decides to reali- reallocate those, those funds to a T-hanger project, so this task order is for the full design for, it's about thirty-eight new T-hangers and five sixty-by-sixty box hangars for more of a corporate type, uh, le- renter at the airport. And so the goal here is to prepare, the, you know, the full bid documents, it's five different buildings, it's four different T-hanger buildings that have, you know, the small T-hangers in them, and then also you have the large, five-unit, um, box hangars on one side of it. So the goal here is to use the, use the limited grant funds right now to design everything and then install the primary infrastructure, so your main taxiways that goes between the buildings, your stormwater utilities, get the area set up so that we can build the hangars as soon as money becomes available for them. And, um, two years ago, just kind of as an example of where money could come from, two years ago, the F D O T came to us, and it's common for airports to, some airports don't use their grant funding, they have a project that just falls through, for whatever reason, they have X, they have funds available, and they came to us two years ago, and they said, which projects are ready to go on the street now for bid and get done right away? And there happened to be a project at that time in Ifunia Springs that was ready to go on the street, but they were just waiting for funds. And so the F D O T was able to use those funds and make that product go. So that's really what we want to set the county up for, is to make sure we have a shovel-ready project that has a big impact in the community, that the, that the F D O T can fund when those funds become available, a- and, and they do, so I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, again, the layout that's in the task order with where the hangars are located, the size of the hangar and all that, that was coordinated with the A O D V um, a couple months ago, so I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Commissioners?
And this will require a, a motion from the board to authorize your signature, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you, what you're saying, Mr. John, because I, I think there's been any number of things that Franklin County maybe could have took, taken advantage of, but we weren't in position to. So if this is gonna put us in a position to be able to take advantage of some future possibilities, I'm all for it, I think it's a great idea.
Right.
I know some people might look at it as, as wasting money, uh, dreaming, but we have proof, verifiable proof, that this has happened in the past. And other entities were able to take advantage of it because they were ready to go.
Right.
So I think it's a great idea.
I'll make a motion to approve this task order.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amerson, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Chairman, I have like three, I, I got three airport items.
I thought there was.
You should be right behind me here in a second, if you go to page twenty-five, um, on the agenda packet, item number three. As the board is aware, the county has become more active with airport operations and airport economic opportunities. In addition, A T and T recently contacted county staff about the possibility of, of building a tower around the old work camp property. With that said, the county is relying on Mr. John Collins of AFCON to assist with research, advice, and recommendations when opportunities such as these are presented to the county for evaluation. Mr. Collins has been doing all this work free of charge, don't know how his bosses feel about that, as there's no approved agreement in place to pay AFCON. I requested from Mr. Collins a task order for your review that would allow for compensation. Having this in place would allow Mr. Collins to invoice the county for authorized services. The task order has a five thousand dollar not-to-exceed amount, and will only apply or be used if the request for services from the county is not covered by other task orders or agreements. The task order will expire once the five thousand dollar threshold is met. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman's signature in the task order number thirteen with AFCON for professional on-call airport consulting services up to five thousand dollars.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Anderson?
Second, would comment.
Second by Commissioner Ward, please proceed, Commissioner.
Can we, can we, can we have them, A T and T put a, a tower up sixty-five as well?
I'll go talk to the representative when she gets through. But, oh, according to his, he's here, somebody has sent an email recently about some property up sixty-five, we're trying to vet that request and see what it's about.
Okay, I know it has nothing to do with this, but hey, anytime I can get an edge in, I'm gonna get an edge in for that, so.
I'm making a motion to approve paying the man for his time, okay, nothing about the tower. But, while we're talking about that, um, is that possible with the height on the tower?
Well, it depends, and that's really why we wanted to take, take a good look at this, because, you know, as you know, with, at airports, you have these invisible surfaces that come off the runways that you have to protect, as a county, you're obligated to protect that. This tower's really close, especially to one, in approach end of one runway, my gut is, you know, is a forty-five or fifty feet tall tower, it's gonna penetrate that surface. And so, we, we just, obviously, we want to help you take a look at that and make sure that we're not approving something that could either reduce your approach minimums at the airport or have a negative impact on the airport.
I guess that's a discussion for another, another day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I've not looked at that yet, um, but, so to, really, kind of how this, that, that agreement would go is if we're, if we're asked to do something, I'll talk to my, Mr. Marone and get his approval, say, yes, this is something we would like you to do, and I'll, I'll give an estimate, I think it'll take two hours or three hours to take a look at it, and we get his invoice for those, those hours at that time.
And, and circling back around on that, I know you get flooded with calls, emails, and you go above and beyond uh, doing stuff that's out of the, you know, really, you're not getting paid for, and I believe that's, that, that's exactly why I made that motion, because I appreciate what you do.
I, I appreciate that, and we, again, we're honored to be, um, working with you side by side with the airport, we're excited about what's happening at the airport, and we're certainly glad to, to be part of it.
I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
But Commissioners, if, if there's any chance that to the outer edges skirts of the property known as the old work camp, there's something we can do. I, I, I mean, e- even in the area where you live, I'm sure it would help sell coverage, if.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Without affecting any of the zones, the landing zones, takeoff zones, you know, if.
Yeah, to, to, I guess, go back to that.
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that, I'm just, I mean, obviously, it's pretty tight, isn't it?
It is.
I mean, I've even been sitting there thinking, how does New York get away with that? You know, I mean, do they have different rules? Yeah, I mean, do, do they have different?
Well, so, so let me, let me just add this, too, even if the obstacle penetrates your surfaces at the airport, that's not necessarily a deal breaker, we just had to submit a study to the F A A and have it formally evaluate it, and, you know, it, they, they might come back and say, you're okay. You know, we evaluated your approaches, we don't believe there's any kind of hazard to air navigation, but you just had to have, have a special light on it, and, um, you have to publish it in their databases, but, um, but again, with, with the area being so close to the approach end of one runway, I think that it's even a more sensitive area, we should take a look at it.
Mr. Chairman, just tell them if they can't put it there, take it up sixty-five.
Or even, even, even if.
That's a long one.
But even if that particular location doesn't work, there may be another place on the airport that might not be near an approach, but it could, it could still be, you know, beneficial for the county and for A T and T to put it, so we can, we can help them find a better location for it if that doesn't work.
I would like to have coverage on that in. And sixty-five, and sixty-five.
Even if it doesn't work there, we, we have plenty of property out there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Plenty of property out there, that, that tower's not gonna take up that much space.
Starts the discussion.
Sounds good, uh, and, Mr. Marone? This, uh, I just want to clarify before we go on. No, not better, yeah, we'll take a motion in a second. So this is gonna be done in conjunction with you or Ms. Erin, with John, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just wanted to clarify, okay. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
All right, um, so this isn't really John-related per se, but the county has received three applications, letters of inter- of interest, intent, interested, that's what that word should be, for the vacant airport operations, economic development alternate seat. Your applicants are Mr. Steve Norton, Mr. George Wilkinson, and Mr. Gordon Hunter. I, I recommend that the applications and the letters of interest are sent to your airport operations, economic development board for review and a recommendation, that recommendation will be presented to this board for consideration and possible appointment.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Amerson, second by Commissioner Ward, any discussion? I'll ask a question, and maybe it's just because we've never done it this way before. Why we have an advisory board give us a recommendation, who are their members going to be?
Um, just because, you know, to make sure that they're involved, and I, the more we do that, T D C does that, I mean, the T D C.
They've recently started doing that.
Yeah, yeah, well.
But anyway.
So I, I, you know, I, I just think it's a good thing, because if you have confidence, it shows confidence in your board, that you send the names to them, and they, you don't have to agree with their recommendation.
No, I'm not saying that.
No, no, I, I, I'm just saying, I, I just try to find a way to make the boards feel, all your boards feel more, you know, inclusive, it's part of the operation.
Okay, that's fine.
That, that's, that's the only reason.
This is the time they ask, or?
Yes, yes, it is, yes, it is.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work out after a few, because we have some other boards that you have to do it for also, if that doesn't work out, then we'll, you know, we'll go back to the.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
No.
Uh, any opposed? That's unanimous.
Now, on a related matter, Commissioners, one of your current A O E D members, Mr. Ken Weeks, inform Mr. Uh, the C E O of that board, Mr. Kirshenbaum, that he's moving to Wakulla County, however, he will continue to work in Franklin County. If memory serves, Mr. Weeks, Mr. Weeks was appointed to the A O E D based on his involvement with the school district's drone program, and indicates that he will continue with that program. Does the board have any issue, uh, with Mr. Weeks continuing to serve on the A O E D, or would you like him to resign since he's moving from, he's not living in the county anymore, but working in the county? He's, as far as I know, he should, where's Ted, he shows up to the meetings, Mr. Weeks does, always here, always participates, good board member.
Michael, doesn't he work at Gulf County and Franklin County, he's doing the drone program?
I know, but Franklin County, I'm not sure about Gulf County.
Okay.
I thought he, that's why we put him on.
Or may, maybe it's over with Gulf Coast, but I think he has some affiliation with not just Franklin County schools, but other educational institutions.
And I apologize, by Franklin County, I meant the school district, I think that's where he works, right, drone program.
I personally had a problem with it, I'm just one of four.
Are you, don't, Mr. Collins?
We, I'm, I'm sorry, we got, uh, there's one more item.
Oh, I, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I was gonna tell you to relax, I mean.
Erin has an item.
We kind of went out and left field over there with.
That's where we stand, sir.
Erin has an item for her, Commissioner Amerson, sorry.
I'm okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with, with that, as long as he's showing up to the meetings and is an, uh, uh, active member of the board. I don't see any reason why we should make him resign, just because he's living out of the county, if he's living, if he's working in the county, I think the drone program at the school is a really good asset, and, uh, I think that I'm okay with him staying on the board.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, right now, we have a member that you appointed that doesn't live in the county.
That's right.
So I have no issue with, with Mr. Weeks staying on, he's an active member. Plus, I like the idea that he has that drone network that we could possibly help us out down the road somewhere with some education or something like that, so, that's my opinion, but.
Okay, and I was asking for a motion, that's, just wanted to hear your thoughts and how you felt about it, and one more, that, Erin, you can have it, one more. Um, so last week, and John, you might need to jump in on this one, last week, I forwarded you an email from F A A that contained a lease agreement compliance review letter regarding the county's F B O lease. After my review of that letter and conferring with Commissioner Amerson, Attorney Schuler, Mr. John Collins, Mr. Andrew Hartman, and I do believe the chairman also, I've left you out there, we all came to the same conclusion that the F A A staff reviewed a draft F B O lease that did not include the changes and the. did not include the changes and the markups that resulted in a version of the FBO lease approved by this Board of County Commissioners. I sent a reply to the FAA office asking that they review the, the board-approved FBO lease. And if there were any concerns after that review, we'd be glad to schedule a call ASAP with the intentions of resolving those issues. So just, I know I sent you guys that email earlier that included that, but it just, it almost was that, that same letter all over again. And we got, almost over a year ago from them.
The first time.
Yes. And we had that meeting and that discussion. So, John, I don't know if you have anything different to say?
No, I should, I think that was the right first response, of making sure they had the most recent lease, because there were some significant changes that were made to it. And some of those specifically addressed the concerns the FAA had. So I, I think at this point, we're getting the latest. And the hard part is, the initial lease was provided back in June, because in their letter, they referenced a lease from, that they received in June.
Yeah.
And they just, a couple of weeks ago, provided their response. It took over five months to review it and provide us this response. So I'm not sure if we could expect a timely response, you know, quick response, or if it's gonna take another five months for them to give us a revised response, but.
But Commissioner Amison had a lot of meetings, you know, you, the chairman, the AOE D chairman, you know, different members, Andrew. He had a lot of meets from June right up until the day we approved it. So, yeah, there's no way they could have been looking at it.
No, they didn't look at that one.
Okay.
And we also have personnel at the airport now as well. You know, you've actually hired a, a full-time employee out of the airport that serves under the airport manager who is taking care of the mowing of the airport and those things that they, they had initially expressed concerns about.
That's right.
So what, it'll be about another six, eight months before we hear from them?
That's what John was saying. And that's it, Commissioners, as far as the airport goes, on my report. I think Aaron had, had an item.
Okay. And this is another project that John Collins with AFCON has been working very hard on. The design, engineering, and permitting is now complete for the $950,000 FDOT stormwater improvements project at the airport. The project will include the removal and replacement of concrete pavement, stormwater structure repair, de-watering, removal and replacement of stormwater structures and pipes, excavation and embankment, and sodding. A non-mandatory pre-bid conference will be held at the county emergency management building, 28 Airport Road, Appalachia Cola, on Thursday, January 4th, at 11:00 a.m. Eastern Time. Board action to authorize advertising for the construction bids for the airport stormwater improvements project.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
I see.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. John, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. So you have a 10 o'clock public hearing. Time's certain. It's a little bit after 10. The board would be interested in taking a quick break. Prepare for that. We'll come back to the public hearing and then continue with the agenda.
Let's do that. We're in recess. Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. We're going to move in the agenda to our public hearing that was scheduled for any time after 10 and after. Ms. Aaron, if you would, please proceed.
Yep. Each year, the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners holds a public hearing and adoption of a five-year capital improvement schedule as part of the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan. You all have received a copy of the preliminary capital improvement schedule. One thing to note, you know, you will see in your copy, there were actually projects that have actually moved off the list or may have been funded already. So they kind of transition off the five-year plan, and then new projects come on. This list is actually something that we base a lot of our grant applications on. And it's just kind of a county wish list, per se, you know, of capital infrastructure projects that we need to see accomplished in the upcoming years. And one, the one item to note is you'll also see And one item to note is you'll also see that communications system upgrade, the EMS fire dispatch, that $11 million project that we're working on, actually through the Triumph grant application process. So that one's a new add. We also have, you know, DW Wilson Park improvements. We've also got in there where we would like to work on getting those energy-efficient ball field lights for DW Wilson Park as well. So there are some other things that have come on, some have moved off. If there's anything that you all do not see on there, we also added the SGIC wall north repairs. That's actually from the damage after Hurricane Idalia and the decline of that area around the fishing pier. And any questions from you all? Or, you know, we also have a TDC spending plan update coming up. That public hearing is going to be in January. Any changes that are made to that? You know, a lot of those projects were actually included in this capital improvement plan schedule. However, if changes are made, you know, we can always amend the schedule later on. So that's something to note as well.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Erin.
Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing, so either after or before your comments, you will have to request if anyone has any public comments.
Okay. Anything you turn to the floor before I turn over to public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have anybody that's wanting to comment on this publicly in the room?
All right, anyone attending by Zoom, this is a public comment. You did not need the, there's another requirement to fill out a speaker card to speak at a public comment. Please indicate your willingness to speak by raising your hand, but, I'm sorry, by using the raise hand feature on your smart device. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I will say in talking with Ms. Erin, I want to make sure the public is aware of this. This is not every project that Franklin County is doing, but it's the county projects. So it has nothing to do with anything that's on FTOT's five-year work plan per se unless it's a county project. So there are other things, but these are all the things that the county is pursuing themselves as an entity, correct?
Correct, and this is also a list that looks to the future. So anything that's in progress right now will not show up on that list.
Right, right. Any discussion or anything that y'all think needs to be added that has been left out?
Mr. Chairman, I do, but I want to confer with the constitutional officer first on something, if you don't mind.
As far as what we're adopting, or?
Yes, to add to the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
Potentially.
Yeah, well, we can do that because we're probably going to have to amend it anyway because there are, I can confirm, there are potential projects on that TDC updated spending plan that are not listed here because they haven't been approved yet. So we're going to be doing an amendment at some point anyway.
Okay.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
We can adopt it and amend it later, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt this as it's currently written.
All right, so I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Warren.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? That should end us.
Okay, Commissioners, I also have an ordinance that we will need to read into the public records as well.
Please proceed.
An ordinance amending the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan to adopt a new five-year schedule of capital improvements, whereas Franklin County is required to annually update the five-year schedule of capital improvements in its comprehensive plan. Now therefore be it ordained by the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners that the current adopted five-year schedule of capital improvements is repealed and a new five-year schedule of capital improvements, as shown in the attached Exhibit A, is adopted. Any other ordinances in conflict with the previous versions of this ordinance are herewith repealed. This ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. This ordinance adopted this fifth day of December 2023 in a regular meeting of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners.
Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That should end us. Is that it, Ms. Erin?
That's it.
Okay, then Ms. Courtney, we're coming back to you.
I just have two, I have a board action and then an informational item.
Okay.
So for the action item, I have, I'm bringing to you the approval of a planning zoning board member appointment of Jeremy Putnall for District Two.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Warren. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And then the informational item is we recently hired Link Collins to the Building and Sanxing Department. She'll be starting next week?
Yeah.
Next week, the 11th.
She will help Courtney with zoning and she'll have the building department with processing some of their requests too.
Sounds good. Anyone have anything for Ms. Courtney? Courtney, thank you.
No problem.
All right, up next, Ms. Kim Bodine, Career Source.
Hey, Kim, I think you guys might be muted. Let me see, is she... Okay, you're not, there you go. Go ahead. Still can't hear you for some reason, Kim. Yeah, it's not shown that you're muted on our end, but we can't hear you guys for some reason. I'm not sure.
I'm pulling it, turn it off.
Something with the microphone?
We'll get back to you.
I'll tell you what, while you...
Go get your ITI.
You do that, Kim, we're going to open up some bids and just wave to me when you guys are ready to give it a try. Start talking when you guys are ready to try, we'll know that you got it worked out, okay?
Go ahead, Ms. Erin.
Okay, Commissioners, the first bid opening of the day is going to be for the St. George Island parking improvements between First and Chili Boulevard on St. George Island. This is actually the first of our beach parking improvements project. Oh, okay, do you want to stop and go to Career Source, or?
Try again, Kim?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're good to go.
Okay, sorry.
Come back here.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry for the confusion. Go ahead, Kim.
That's okay. Do you want to come back to me or do you want me to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, we have two items on the agenda today for you to consider. One is a resolution of intent to form for regional planning purposes. The other is memorandum of understanding with infrastructure funding agreements. That's a mouthful, so we call it the MOU IFAs. I'm not sure which is, which one you'd like to take first.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, Ms. Kim, it's up to you.
Okay, so we'll talk about the intent to form. There's a resolution before you. As you know, last year, we went through a long, I'll call it a battle across the state for consolidation of workforce boards. We were very happy. And because of your support, we were not consolidated with another region. However, the state board did determine that they want to form regional planning areas, which is an option under federal law. The governor approved the state board's plan to do that. And so it isn't as restrictive as consolidation, whereas all of our money would be put in one pot and we would have a super large board. We will still operate with local control. However, they do want us to standardize some of our processes and work more closely together. And as I told you last year, we work very closely in Northwest Florida. And when I say Northwest Florida, I'm talking about from Escambia County to Liberty County. There's a 12-county area that encompasses four workforce boards. And so they would, they ask for some boards to volunteer to become regional planning areas. And in working with our board and the other regions, we determined that it would be in our best interest to go ahead and volunteer to be one of the first regional planning areas. We did that specifically because we feel like if we're one of the first to go forward, we'll have more influence on the process because they're really looking to us to determine how this process will work and the things that we can pull together quickly in terms of low-hanging fruit that are easy for us to standardize between the four of our regions. And so that's, that's sort of what the resolution talks about. It talks about the 12 counties and the four boards that they encompass, the four sets of county commissioners, and the process, a little bit of what we will be doing. We'll be required to form a regional plan. And really, what we wanted to be sure that was in this resolution is that even though we will be working together to make our processes alike, that we still want to protect local control because what's good even for one county, not even a whole workforce region, but one county is sometimes different than what's better for another county. And so we are really looking out for the interest of being able to still provide local services that match with each county and with our regions, but to make sure that all of those dovetail together, that we are offering the same basic services and the same good services across all 12 counties. And so if you have questions about this resolution, I'm happy to answer them. We are calling it the Northwest Florida Workforce Collective because there are other regional planning councils already in place across Florida, and we didn't want there to be confusion with those.
Thank you. You just answered some of my questions because I definitely had some. Because with the way this, this resolution is written, it looks like you're trying to form a new planning council. And we already have membership and are a part of the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, which, to be honest with you, from year to year, we just keep our head down and keep working because there are some of the legislators who don't like regional planning councils, and they've made that known.
Right.
So I didn't know how forming anything that's going to be any kind of planning entity over several counties was going to be received positively. So that would, you answered some of my questions over what you said in that last statement. Anyone else have any questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? For the resolution? Yes, no, table for more information?
It's basically just, Mr. Chairman, same thing that they're already doing, they're just changing the name somewhat.
I think they are, yes.
So moved.
Did you just make a motion to approve?
Yes, yes.
All right, so I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Warren. Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? I will ask Ms. Kim just for clarification. So the way this played out, if you will, we wound up not having to merge with anybody else at that time, but through this collective, you're still going to be merging in some senses.
Well, I think we'll be working more closely together to make sure that if you walk in any one of our centers, you can expect a certain level of service. However, the way we deliver services and the kinds of grants that we pursue, which may be for one county and not another, those will still give us the control, the local control and the local flavor we need to be responsive to our communities. I'll be honest with you, I don't think any of us really wanted to form regional planning areas, but the state board has passed it. It's going to happen, whether we want to do it or not.
Yeah.
So we felt like since we do have a good working relationship with our peers and partners in Northwest Florida, that it might be in our best interest to go ahead and get out in front of it and work on some of these issues. I don't think there will be problems. I will be honest and tell you, my concern is, I have a little concern that down the road, this could make it easier, right, for consolidation.
Right.
But there's, there's nothing, we have absolutely no choice. We will be forming a regional planning area. In this case, we get to pick our partners and we get to move forward at a pace and in a direction that we're comfortable with. And if you notice in this intent to form resolution, we do require our own selves to come back on a quarterly basis to keep you all up to date on how this is working and what's happening with it.
Sounds good. I mean, I'll always say it, I think the rest of us would feel the same way. We're never going to want to relinquish more local control than we already have. We're going to want to keep that as much as possible. That's the whole idea behind having government closest to the people, which is what local government is. It's, it's in a lot of instances closer to the people than some of the branches that go higher than us. So we're always going to want to maintain as much local control as possible. That's the only reason I asked that question.
Yes, and we certainly support that.
Yes, ma'am. All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. All right, please proceed.
Okay, and the other item is the MOU IFAs. This is a requirement under federal law. There is a state policy that guides and directs how we word the document and the components that are within it. When we were reviewing policies and when we had our financial monitoring, they indicated there were a couple of areas in this document that they felt like needed more attention. They didn't like that we had the term of the document only on the signature page. They wanted more wording about how we came up with the negotiation or process for how we determined the payments or the cost that partners would pay. And they wanted more language about barriers to employment. So to put it in a nutshell, the intent of MOU IFAs from federal law is that we have required partners listed in federal law under the last iteration of WIOA. It was hard to get those partners to really come together the way that they envisioned it when they wrote the law. And so they tied a process to it where there's an infrastructure funding agreement. Now, the funding that partners have to pay is very small over the course of the year just by the nature of the way that the methodology works for determining those costs. But what it has done, for most of the partners, they don't want to pay anything to be joined in and to provide services in conjunction with one-stop centers. But, so this, this offers an opportunity for them to provide in-kind services. For example, we have some of the partners that must come into the comprehensive center and provide services in the center to the clients and customers that we're seeing come through. If they do that, they don't have to pay a penny. If they don't provide staff, as is indicated in their infrastructure funding agreement, they might owe us $200 at the end of the year. So it's not a lot of money. I will tell you, it's a lot of work. But the intent of this whole process was to get required partners to be more interactive and work within this one-stop-center system to provide services to the universe of customers that we all serve.
Anyone have any questions or concerns? I do have one question I want to ask, just looking at some of these MOUs and the way they're worded. And I might be completely off-base, so if I am, just disregard it and answer the best you can. So some of these MOUs have different required partners in workforce development. And I noticed specifically in the one with TCCC, the Tri-County, what is the Tri-County? First off, let's start there.
It's a community action agency.
Right, well, what's the three counties?
I'm sorry?
What are the three counties, the Tri-County?
It's Bay County, I think it's Washington County and Holmes County. So it's over this way. You have a different action agency for Franklin County, which is Capital Area Community Action Agency.
Okay. But now I didn't see, that's not listed in these MOUs, though.
No, because the only comprehensive one-stop center we have for our region is in Bay County.
Okay.
A comprehensive center requires veteran services representatives there. There's a listing for comprehensive centers. And so yours is what we would call a satellite center.
Yeah, because they're adult ed, they're career tech, there's all kinds of different things that are involved in Bay County, but nowhere else.
Right, well, we do, I think Hanyi Technical also serves as adult ed in terms of their footprint for Franklin County. However, you know, we fund training at, at all of them. We fund training at Florida Panhandle and at Lively and Tallahassee as well. Whatever is the most convenient for the customer, that's where we're going to send them for training that's approved.
Right, well, as far as Hanyi, I don't think Hanyi has a footprint in Franklin County. They were asking for a footprint when we were doing our stuff at the school. at the school with the welding program, and they declined. So I think it's actually from Tallahassee.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they sent about a two-sentence response that basically said they would never be interested. But anyway, it's not trying to stop anything. I'm just making sure what we're looking at. So what would be, what would be the action you're looking for from this board?
To approve these, these four documents, it's required that local elected officials sign off on these for us to move forward with them to get the other partners to sign. Now, we do work with Capital Area Action Agency over in your area. In the past, we have shared office space with them. And I believe they have their own space there now. So we could enter into an agreement with them as well.
Okay. Well, I mean, whatever's going to be the most helpful to not just the residents of Creoswell Gulf Coast, everything that's under your umbrella. I mean, if our county's a part of it, I think we'd all be helped by that, if that's possible to do, you know?
Yes, sir. I think that in, in our case, in Bay County, they have a, tri-county has a very small presence. They have a separate office, and we never interacted with them. They never interacted with us. In Franklin County, we've shared space with Capital Area before. They have their own space now. They could come to our location, but to be honest with you, they probably have more traffic in their location than we do in ours.
Right, okay.
So we could send staff over there or connect with them in that way. I think for them, we would just need a memorandum of understanding.
Right, right, okay. Well, however that works out, I'm fine with. I just want to, Ms. Kim, I'm just doing my best to make sure Franklin County's included for whatever small part of the pie we're going to get. That's all I'm doing.
Absolutely, I understand. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions or concerns from the board? And what is the pleasure of the board as far as these MOUs? Approve, table, deny? Those are all valid options, I guess?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. That's it, is that it, Ms. Kim?
That's it for today. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. We really appreciate everything you guys do on behalf of Franklin County residents.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Erin, let's open some bids.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, start from scratch again. Okay, this is actually the construction of 32, or the addition of approximately 32 delineated spark parking spaces in the Commercial District of St. George Island. This is part of the board's beach, beach parking improvements funding through the American Rescue Plan. Now, one thing about this parking area, it is between First Street West and Chili Boulevard. It also includes the, some landscaping efforts. So it will also include low-maintenance native vegetation such as muley grass, dune sunflower, and some sable palm trees because we are trying to move away from the, you know, of course, just a large pavement asphalt surface without any sort of landscaping. And there's also a permitted stormwater retention area included for the project as well because we don't want to make any of our stormwater drainage problems worse. And as Mr. Marone just depicted on, upon the screen, that's actually what the project will look like. And today, we've actually received four bids. However, we did have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, and one of the bidders that submitted a response for the project did not attend that mandatory pre-bid meeting. So we would typically reject the bid because they did not, they did not comply with the bid instructions.
Mandatory is mandatory.
And that was actually, it was advertised. It says a mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held at the project site on Thursday, November 9th at 2:00 Eastern Time. And we also had another pre-bid meeting that's, that very same day. And this bidder did attend that one, but they did not attend the second meeting, so. And that would be Pygott Asphalt and Site Work of Crawfordville, Florida.
Do you have a different take on the word mandatory?
Oh, no, I would say, I, I agree with what Ms. Erin has said. I mean, it was required mandatory pre-bid conference. They did not attend the mandatory pre-bid conference. So my recommendation would be to reject the bid as well.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. All right, the first bid today is received from...
Let's, by motion and vote of the board. And what was the name of the person?
Pygott Asphalt and Site Work LLC.
Okay.
Just by motion and vote of the board for the board to reject that.
To reject because they did not attend that mandatory pre-bid.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Amison that reflects that wording.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ward. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, the first bid being opened today is from GeoFlorida Group LLC of Appalachia Cola, Florida. Again, GeoFlora Group LLC of Appalachia Cola, Florida. Total base bid, $219,071.80. Again, $219,071.80. And make sure they have their bid bond. Bid bond is included. This next construction bid is received from North Florida Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Florida. They did include the bid bond. Total base bid, $247,529.50. And this last one is from Robertson Robertson Incorporated of Tallahassee. Again, Robertson Robertson Incorporated of Tallahassee. Total base bid, $242,106.70. Again, total base bid, $242,106.70. And make sure bid bond. Bid bond is included. This should actually be released to Dewberry Engineers for review and recommendation.
Okay. So that's what the motion would be to, to turn these over to Dewberry for their recommendation after they review it.
Yeah, and they will make sure that, of course, the low bid includes everything that it was supposed to.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous, three of them.
Okay, Commissioners, our next bid opening for today is going to be for the critical facilities generators. And this is going to be the emergency backup generators for Weems Memorial Hospital in Appalachia Cola, Weems Clinic in Carabelle, and then also the airport runway lights. Okay, let's see, actually have six individual copies included on this one. The first bidder to be opened is going to be Lawson &amp; Lawson Electrical Services Incorporated. And they are from Tallahassee, Florida. The turnkey price for the project is $682,828. Again, $682,828. And they did include a bid bond.
And that's for three generators there?
This is emergency backup generators at Weems Memorial Hospital, Appalachia Cola, Weems Clinic in Carabelle, and also the airport runway lights.
Okay, but nothing about the clinic in Appalachia?
The clinic in Carabelle and, and the runway.
I thought she said...
It's Weems Hospital, yeah, not the clinic in, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, so it's, okay, three areas.
Yeah, but, Mr. Chairman, the Weems generator at the hospital will power the clinic as well?
Hopefully. Yeah.
Sounds good to me, that's all I have.
It should.
I would hope so, $682,000.
You know, assumed that'd always work well.
That's right.
That's why I was asking.
And these bids will be released to Tracy Busby, Management Experts, because she is the consultant on this project. And I will ask for clarification on that as well for the Appalachia Cola clinic.
Thank you.
And on this one, we did not have a mandatory pre-bid, but there was actually a voluntary pre-bid meeting for interested bidders to actually visit the project sites. And to my knowledge, I don't think any of them actually showed up at the sites.
Okay.
This next one is from Beechfield Contractors in Panama City, Florida. Turnkey price for the entire project, $608,702. Again, $608,702. And the bid bond is included. Multiple, multiple layers of, goodness. This next bid is from Zabat Engine Services Incorporated. Again, Zabat Engine Services Incorporated from Jacksonville, Florida. Turnkey price for the entire project, $954,005.48. Again, $954,005.48. And the bid bond is included.
All right, the motion would be to turn this over to Ms. Tracy Busby for review and recommendation.
That's correct. So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Is that it for the opening of bids, Ms. Erin?
That's it for the opening of bids.
Okay, we're on to report. Please proceed.
Okay, the first item, the board action CR-67 Phase III advertisement. At the last meeting, the board approved the Phase III widening and resurfacing of approximately 1.8 miles of CR-67 from SFR 166 to SFR 172, grant agreement from the Florida Department of Transportation. The county will receive the fully executed copy of the award agreement back from FDOT sometime this next week. Board action to authorize advertising for CEI services first and later construction bids for the CR-67 Phase III project.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, my slated item number two was covered earlier in the meeting under John Collins' support. The next item number three, which is the Weber Infrastructure Master Services Agreement for Bridge Cleanup. In February, the board approved the renewal of the Ferobial Services Bridge Cleanup Contract. The county has an agreement with the Sheriff's Department to clean the bridges for $22,004 per year. Ferobial Services subcontracted the litter control for the state-owned bridges to Franklin County for their contract value of approximately $10,004 per year. The county, or in other words, the Sheriff's Department, cleans the bridges more times than the state stipulated schedule. Ferobial Services has since transitioned to Weber Infrastructure, and a new agreement must be signed with them to reflect the new corporate name. The county attorney has reviewed the attached, and Weber has also approved and acknowledged the county's use of the Sheriff's Department as a subcontractor. Board action to authorize the chairman to sign the attached bridge cleanup contract with Weber Infrastructure.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? Ms. Erin, I want to ask a question. So we're, we're updating the language because it's changed names?
Correct.
Or we're also going to have to update the language on the cleanup, on the money that we're getting for them for the cleanup? Or is that all included?
I believe that's all included.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, they would actually, they're not able to process our invoices until we send this agreement back to them.
How did I know that was what it really was? But that's all good. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item number four, Alligator Point Beach Nurishment Project Permit Application. Back in 2020, the county submitted a $200,000 grant application to the Florida Department of Environmental Protections, Beach Management Division, for the design and permitting phase of the 1.3-mile Alligator Point Beach Nurishment Project. In August of 2021, the board signed the $200,000 grant award agreement. In July of 2022, after much deliberation and unfavorable public commentary regarding the project, the county approved moving forward with a limited task order with Coastal Engineers, MRD and Associates. Of the original project scope, the county authorized only the completion of design, engineering, and permits. However, would not authorize a portion of the task order associated with the funding mechanisms for the maintenance costs of the projects, which would be the analysis of an MSBU, MSTU, which was Task 5 through MRD. The design and engineering is now complete, and the permit application can be submitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. There are no plans to move past the permitting phase at this time. This grant will, however, result in approved design, permits, and quantities for the development of viable cost estimates should a natural disaster ever warrant a change in public opinion towards the beach re-nourishment in the future. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Permit Application for the Alligator Point Beach Nurishment Project.
So move. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? I do have a question, Ms. Erin, or a comment. So basically, what this would do is put us in a position, if there ever was any major damage or something, where we can apply for funding, we're really ready to go with that.
That's correct.
Is what it would do.
That's correct. Yep, so it's definitely, it's still a worthwhile project.
Yes, yeah, I think it's a good move. I do. Because none of us can tell what's going to happen in the future.
Correct, and at the time of application, we also, we didn't know how well the new road was going to hold up either.
Exactly. All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item number five, the Audit Review Committee Ranking Results for the Auditing Services, RFP. At the last meeting, the board opened responses to the RFP for auditing services. Three firms responded to the solicitation. Malden Jenkins of Bradenton, Lanigan &amp; Associates of Tallahassee, and James Moore of Tallahassee. Their proposals were distributed to members of the Audit Review Committee, which was comprised of the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and the constitutional officers. The proposals were ranked separately by the review committee members, and results were tabulated and announced at a public meeting held on behalf of the committee on Friday, December 1st. Lanigan &amp; Associates with their $120,000 proposal for the services was the highest-ranked firm by the Audit Review Committee. Board action to issue a notice of award to the highest-ranked firm Lanigan &amp; Associates by the Audit Review Committee and authorize the chairman to sign the contract documents once available.
Pleasure of the board?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, next item is number six, which was the Review Committee Ranking Results for the Engineering Services, RFQ. Also, at the last meeting, the board opened responses to the RFQ for engineering services. Four firms responded to the solicitation. Madrid CPWG, Gortmauler Engineering Incorporated, Kissinger Campo &amp; Associates, and Dewberry Engineers Incorporated. The responses were distributed to members of the review committee, which was comprised of county planner Mark Currington, county coordinator Michael Marone, and myself. The highest-ranked firm was Dewberry Engineers. As these responses were ranked on qualifications alone, the next step will be for the commission to accept the recommendation and authorize staff to begin contract negotiations with the highest-ranked firm. Board action to issue a notice of intent to award and authorize staff to begin contract negotiations with the highest-ranked firm Dewberry Engineers. A final contract will be brought back to the board for approval at your next meeting.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners.
Ms. Erin, do you do think that'll be ready by the next meeting, though, correct?
I certainly hope so.
Okay.
Yep, because it's also, um, I hope for you all for, um, within the next two weeks, if you could be formulating your list of roads that we would like to, um, go ahead and go out for, uh, bid specs.
How long can the list be? As long as our budget is, right?
Yeah, which it would not hurt if you wanted to prioritize, you know, all of the roads that you would like to see done. And then Caleb can then look at the, you know, of course, the balance available by district and kind of let you know what's reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item, item number seven is the draft TDC spending plan for information only. As reported during this year's budget discussions, there was a change in the twenty-twenty-three statutes which authorize the expenditure of up to ten percent of tourist development tax proceeds to fund public safety services. Before this can occur, the county must amend the TDC spending plan to reflect the change. A rough draft of the revised plan is attached to my report for the board to review before sending on, sending the draft on to TDC for their review and recommendations. The attached draft plan clearly outlines the goals and objectives for tourist development and provides a guiding document for budgeted revenues and expenditures going forward. The twenty-three-twenty-four plan budget allocates the current year's revenues as percentage totals. A maximum of nine percent can be spent for administration activities, forty percent in advertisement and promotional activities, twenty-one percent towards objectives E and F of the plan, which include museum improvements and operations, erosion control efforts, maintenance dredging, and visitor center activities, ten percent for public safety services, ten percent for beach park facilities, and ten percent as a reserve. Interest revenues are earmarked for engineering and design costs associated with projects, and carryforward funds are proposed to be allocated to a variety of projects which fit within Florida statute and the objectives of categories E and F of the plan, including the replacement of three additional dune walkovers on St. George Island as erosion control measures, replacing the decking on the access ramp to the St. George Island fishing pier, replacing theater curtains at Chapman Auditorium, which is improvements for a publicly owned and operated auditorium, improving the press box and concession building at Kendrick Sports Arena in Carabelle, improvements of a sports arena, construction of the East Point Nature Center Building, boardwalks, paths, parking, interpretive signs, and displays for nature center, construction of a second county convention center, of course, size appropriate for population and area on St. George Island. The first convention center is, in the county, is Fort Coombs Armory Convention Center in Appalachia Cola. Also included is finishing the renovations to that convention center in Appalachia Cola, which includes refinishing the floors and doing the final replacement of the windows, believe, on the second floor. Upgrading the batting cages, scoreboards, and concession area at the D.W. Wilson Sports Arena in Appalachia Cola. And the spending plan concepts are subject to the governing body making the appropriate legislative findings for use of sales tax proceeds, and/or some concepts and project elements may necessitate clarification on eligibility for funding by the State Attorney General's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So on the, uh, as we spoke at our last meeting, Erin, it was determined that you've done a lot of this work on your own. That's not under your current job description. So the nine percent administrative activities, is that something that could go towards you to supplement your time?
That is actually something that I, I actually did include. I actually tried to, um, I guess galvanize the task that would be performed by administration. And if you will notice in Section A, uh, which is part of the funding objectives, administration is broken down, uh, up to nine percent of net sales tax revenues budgeted in a fiscal year what shall be made available for all administrative purposes. I didn't kind of clarify that contractual and in-house services provided by county staff. And one thing to note on that, um, I did add, let's see. In addition to contractual administration for marketing efforts and council activities, the TDC can approve reimbursement to the county's general fund for the direct expenses relative to the county's administration of the TDC program. County staff will maintain a detailed activity log with hours spent on the administration of TDC programs and projects.
Okay.
Um, and that's just something, you know, I wanted to be sure that there was a funding offset for, um, you know, my efforts, because I'm not able to spend that time on your county projects, um, when I'm working on the TDC project. So that was just something that, um, there will at least be a revenue offset for that.
Wow, I just want to make sure that you're compensated for the time you're spending on it. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I saw the armory upgrades, and I, I'm glad to hear about the, the windows and the floors, because they're in much-needed, uh, disrepair, need to be repaired. Can we add to that, um, speaking for someone who's been in the armory and utilized it? If it's going to be a convention center, I think we should see, and I don't know if there's, we can't add more electrical outlets because of the, the old wiring, but there's like two outlets that people can utilize, and one's upstairs, and it is not amendable. It's difficult when you're, obviously, you need electricity when you're putting on these conventions, and it's hard to do that when you only have two outlets in the whole building.
Yep.
Okay, yep, yep, we can get that included as well.
Yeah, I know, when we did the, uh, Visit Florida held their conference here about, uh, uh, their tourism conference that they did here, uh, back about a year ago, that, I think it was last February. They had a problem, they had to run a drop cord across all the way across to the middle. So anyway, they were trying to make everything presentable, keep it in the middle where everybody could see it, but there was this drop cord that they put tape over it all the way so nobody would trip on it. You know, so, yeah, there, there's some issues with, not enough outlets there, I'm sure.
Um, and then also, if you all will actually look at the, um, at the, the draft, uh, planned budgets that were also included, I believe that's going to be maybe page six or seven of the attached. And you'll see the tourist development twenty-three-twenty-four plan budget, um, and that does total the seven million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, seven or seventy-six dollars that can be seen online for the county's, uh, fund budget total. Now, some of the, some of the categories will move around, of course, you know, once the plan is adopted, but the overall total will remain the same.
And this is information for today, and we're going to take it to the TDC board in their January meeting to come back to us.
Correct, and if you all have any, you know, comments, suggestions, anything you'd like to see changed, you know, please get with me and let me know as well.
Do you have a question, Ms. Erin?
Um, and actually, miscellaneous project updates, um, let's see, we just opened, uh, for the SGI parking area improvements. Yes, we'll make every effort possible to have those improvements finished by Chili Cook-Off, which is the first weekend in March, or the possibility where it would, uh, at least be to a point where it would not disrupt anything. And then we also were able to get the boat bumpers replaced in the basin area of the St. George Island Boat Ramp that had been damaged from Hurricane Idalia. That did occur, and they're working on the handrail replacement right now. I know, uh, myself and Commissioner Sanders, uh, we've been working on the Landarc EMS station, and we're not quite ready for a public update on that yet, um, but yes, we, we have been working on that as well.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Erin. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Erin before we proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I just got something real quick. She mentioned the roads. I've asked, I think, uh, Mr. Howard, our, our director is of wealth of knowledge when it comes to roads in the community, and so is Ms. Virginia, in terms of what might need or take precedence over other roads. So I'm going to get with him on my district. The thing is, is the issue with that, though, is we all have roads in our, our districts that need help, and some higher than others. I don't know, and I, I hate to use the word workshop, but is that something that we maybe could workshop and have the community involved as well? So they could come and put their input, or is that something that probably would be prudent?
Maybe after the first year, we could try to get, uh, might, might be more beneficial to us as a commission and to the community as a whole, for us to try to hire somebody to do a study and kind of prioritize, I mean, forwards based on metrics. But I mean, it might not have to go that in depth, we might be able to do it ourselves. I mean, I'm not, not trying to say we're pushing our work off on somebody else, I'm just saying we want to get a good result.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we don't waste anybody's time, but then in addition to that, we, we get the top-ranked roads that need help and kind of work from there. I know there's a lot.
Yeah, what, what that entails, though, Commissioner, is, and I'm fine with that, but what it entails is, are we going to continue to approach roads as a district-by-district thing? Are we going to approach roads as a county thing, and we're going to do the worst first?
And, and that's, again, kind of why I was thinking we maybe could have a workshop and just figure all that out, because...
I agree with all that.
Um, I, I just, I, and my frustration too, and I've said it before in the past, is we can't get roads paved. If I want a road paved right now, I can't call Erin's up and say, hey, get whoever to come pave this road, and it happened. Because they're not in the county mobilized, and for them to get here, it's going to cost us six thousand or more bucks to do that. And I think that's ridiculous. I just don't think it's, I don't think it's productive, and I don't like it. If I want a road paved in my district, I want it done, and I don't want to wait six months to get it done, or a year to get it done. And I want it done right. I want it done to where it's not, uh, imposing an issue with drainage onto someone's property or into the right-of-way, causing our road department more trouble when it's, you know, not draining their property and have to go dig a ditch or whatever. I just think there's a lot that entails in just, um, just that, um, in terms of the roads. I've been after a while to get some quotes, and the quotes are just outrageous, including the, the mobilization fees. So I think there's a better way to do it and go about doing it that's going to be, that would be more productive, but it's just all a matter of us coming together collectively, because let's face it, we can't talk behind closed doors to get it done. I feel like the only way to do it would be an open forum, uh, just based on that. Because that's, there's so many variables that that entails, just going and getting a road paved or naming a road that we think in our district is, ranks higher, needs to be addressed first. Those are just my thoughts.
Well, those are all good thoughts, too. What, what's really going to be a telltale sign for us as a small rural county is if the legislature will agree with the asks that's being submitted through the, uh, Association of Counties. Not that they would vote for any additional taxes, but they would give all the counties the flexibility to ask their voters if they can have an infrastructure tax. Because then I think we move to a place where it's going to be slower to begin with, and once you get it going, it'll move faster because your engineering, which will do away with creating more problems, your engineering roads are paving, and as you start to have these paved, well, you're trying to start engineering other roads. You know what I mean? So it's, you're trying to get that thing started so it can flow. As it is now, our budgets are so limited, district by district. Time you add engineering to most of it, your budget might be complete the shot of a one or two roads. You know, it's, it's just reality of where we're at, where we are. And the conversation, Commissioner, I'm not trying to drag it over, the conversation that you helped head up with the people at the state about their concern of what they can or can't do or will do about the price of gas at the pump in Franklin County?
I was going to bring that up.
Ain't going to put us in any better light. Because they really act like they, you know what I mean? That's something they can't get involved in.
And, and I'm going to bring that up under Commissioner Comments. I'll, I'll give a little ver, verbiage about that, but anyway.
Well, I was going to let you all know, too, that the city of Carabelle is planning on a paving project out there by the clinic out in Carabelle, Fifth Street. The clinic and the, um, health department, I feel like that's partly ours, too, because we've got those facilities out there. So they've asked me to come in there and kind of join them, and I've talked to Erin about it, and we're going to wait and see how much of a quote they come up with. But I feel like that's a very needed repaving right there, because we have so much access to county health facilities there.
Mr. Chairman, we, we did that, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
But the only thing is, if it goes anything like the striping does, we're going to be in trouble because, I mean, that striping down Alligator Point, eighty-four thousand dollars from Atlantic, fifty-seven thousand dollars just plain paint. You can't, with the budgets that we have for our paving, you can't afford that. It's going to be a situation.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say, uh, Commissioner Sanders, we, I did that with the, the city to pave the library parking lot. So we went in together, I think it was like fourteen thousand. It was, it was really reasonable, I mean, because I, I agree, they're, they take a lot on their own to, to help us out, too.
Yeah.
Helping us out with our, our roads in our district, so.
But they, they asked me a couple of weeks ago if I'd be considering it, and I said I'm very much so because we're all into working together as a, a community, you know, for that. Because this is, this is not just county tax-paying dollars, it's everybody's tax-paying dollars when they buy at the pumps. Yeah. Except for those people that don't drive.
There are a few like that. There are a few like that.
Very few.
All right. Sounds good. So, Mr. Brolin, I think we're up to you, sir.
All right, most of my action items have already been addressed. So number one, page twenty-four, at your last meeting, I informed the board that the city of Appalachia Cola's volunteer fire department was ready to proceed with the purchase of their radio repeater for the department's communication system. Back in August of twenty twenty-two, the board approved a thirteen-thousand-dollar purchase, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, thirty-eight cents. However, the cost for the, the repeater now is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars. The board had a couple of questions. They wanted to verify that the radio repeater would be compatible with a new communication system that the county is in the process of applying to Triumph Funding. The system will be like what Cola County's recently-approved communication system. I think they had their ribbon cutting on that recently. Williams Communications, which is the city's vendor, city of Appalachia's vendor, informed Mr. Travis Wade, the city manager, that the repeater would be compatible as a primary or as a backup if we bought them a new one as part of the system, that can also serve as a backup. So that answered that question. And the other question would be where this repeater will be installed, on Duke Energy's current tower or the new tower that's still in the planning stages? Mr. Wade confirmed that this repeater would be installed in the current Duke Energy Tower and then moved when the new tower construction is completed. The county will purchase the repeater. However, the city of Appalachia Cola will be responsible for any costs associated with moving the repeater to the new Duke Energy Tower. As stated at that meeting, November twenty-first, I recommended that the cost for the repeater is paid from those CRA funds that were returned to the county from the city of Appalachia Cola when it was realized that their CRA was no longer valid. And hopefully, I've answered all the questions. So board action to authorize the thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-three-dollar purchase of that radio repeater for the city's volunteer fire department's, uh, fire department from the returned city of Appalachia Cola's CRA funds.
That move?
Hold on, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Amison. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And at your November seventh meeting, the board authorized staff to request a quote from Vector Security for the common areas around the St. George Lighthouse and beach bathrooms. This was based on that incident, uh, where individuals were caught trying to start a small fire in the beach bathrooms. I met with Ms. Amy Hodson, she's executive director of the lighthouse, Mr. Stone Grable, Vector, uh, to review the security needs. We agreed that five HD exterior cameras with monitoring and after-hour notification would be appropriate. That would hopefully help solve the problem. Let me stop. So by, like, explain these things as they're explained to me. So basically, it's not just a camera system. It can be programmed that if some certain cameras are triggered after a certain hour, Amy will get a notification on her phone right away if she could log into the camera. I think that, too, is a pretty cool feature. Vector submitted a quote of one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars for the five exterior HD cameras. That includes installation, and it'll be forty-nine fifty a month to monitor the cameras. Board action to approve the twelve forty-five installation and the forty-nine fifty monthly monitoring fee.
So move. Motion to approve by Commissioner Amison.
Second with a question.
Second by Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
I just want to say, for one, all these cameras that we're having to purchase is coming out of our general fund?
Yes. Right, Erin? The general fund is paying for all of them.
Correct. I just think it's a shame that we're having to use our taxpayer money to pay for something that we really shouldn't have to be paying for. But this, we live in a society now where nobody respects other people's property, so...
Not a fire in a bathroom.
Well, I'm hoping that this will deter some of the stuff. And if, if that happens, then it's worth every penny spent. Because in the long run, we're going to probably spend more money to fix all the stuff that, that these cameras will hopefully prevent. And, and even more than that, if we can catch the individuals doing it and hold them accountable, make them pay for it.
Yeah.
And it will actually be the, the Parks and Recreation Fund, but budget.
Okay. So, okay, so some of them are different, some funding, okay, I got you.
But it still comes out from that law.
Yeah. Which is a shame, it's a shame, but...
All right, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioners, you can skip all, all the way over to twenty-six. Item seven. The board has engaged Evergreen to create an incentive bonus program, which will include annual employee reviews and incentive pay, and a certification pay program that will increase the salary of any employee that receives a certification as part of their job description and responsibilities. I'd like the board to consider asking Evergreen to create a longevity bonus program for your review. Here's my idea of the program. It will give employees a bonus for every, when I say, I mean, a bonus like a one-time bonus, not something to increase their salary, but that will be your decision. It will give a bonus for every five years of service. For instance, they would get a certain amount on their fifth year, tenth, fifteenth, twentieth, twenty-third, et cetera, et cetera. See, not too many people will be here too far past twenty-five years, maybe thirty or so, on their employment anniversary dates. To be clear, I'm not asking the board to adopt this program today. Be clear, so we don't get all the emails, but rather to allow Evergreen to create this program and present it for your review sometime next year, when you can discuss it in more detail and see if you like it, you don't like it, or you just say no, this isn't gonna work for us, and we move on then. I like it because, number one, it does reward your employees that, that stay here, you know, through the thick and thin. One, we're rewarding them that way, and it also is something that you can basically budget for. You know their start dates. You, so you can, especially we'll give you their anniversary dates, so you will know, it's not like a surprise of the budget. It's not something that's gonna hit the budget in, in a way where everybody gets it at the same time. You'll be able to plan for it.
So this, let me ask a question. So this would be something, yeah, they're gonna present to us, but whatever, whatever the presentation is, is also gonna include the amount it's gonna take to adopt it, so we can have for next year when we do our budget decisions.
Yes, yes, yes. They can give you a projection over five years of, in one, in two, in three, you know, how much it's gonna cost you each year, because obviously every, boy, you won't hit the five-year mark.
All the same time, exactly.
You might have a year where nobody hits any anniversary marks, I don't know. I mean, you know, the crew isn't that big, but
Right.
again, without looking at it in detail, I can't really answer that question right now.
No, but that, that's what I'm saying, just, I'm just trying to prelate it so we'll know that that question's something that needs to be answered.
I'll make sure it's part of the presentation.
So it might be more feasible if we get to that point, and it's something the board does want to pursue, to do like you would do with your own personal budget, if you know something's gonna cost you a hundred and fifty annually, and it's all at one time.
Yes.
Well, I'd budget twelve dollar, twelve dollar fifty cent a month.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Yes, I got you.
So instead of trying to put it in the budget this year, one time for this, and now it's this, and now it's this, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Do it like.
And kind of cover it, but anyway, that's just a thought.
Again, I'm just asking if it's something you'd like me to contact Evergreen and say, hey, guys, would you add this to your presentation for when you do that next year for the board?
It's gonna be pretty high. The estimation is gonna be pretty high, but we're gonna be at that point, at that point, and, uh, given the raises, that we're all gonna be almost complete with that, and then you can afford to start a new, a new thing.
Oh, yes, Commissioner, so, and I'm sorry, so what I'm thinking is that they would make this presentation to you next year, because next year is your last year of the five-year plan, so this won't take it back into year six or year seven. I'm sorry, yes. I should have clarified that, yes.
Yeah, and then that way you can, you can bear, I mean, you can see the reasoning behind it, because you do need to do something, and we do, we, the county, need to do something to make sure that we keep some of this longevity in the county.
Yes.
Because with longevity comes institutional knowledge.
Yes.
And with institutional knowledge, there's not enough price on that.
Yes, nope.
I mean, there's no price on it. That's, that's good.
So, do you need a motion?
No, just wanna know, but general, if you guys are good with it, to, to.
Tell them all part of it.
Yeah.
Tell them all part of it, you know, man.
It's all good.
Yes, so, you guys, good, good with this one?
Yeah.
Okay, and you know, I like to give credit where credit is due, so, I was, Commissioner, so you and I go through this. I was at home, you know, kind of, you know, you bounce things off your, your partner about some of the issues we were having, and she turned to me, and Monica turns to me, and she goes, well, why, why don't you try this out? I was like, hmm, not a bad idea. So, I'm gonna give credit where credit is due, that came from her, and, you know, Commissioner Anderson tells me he does the same thing, because he loves to tell me, well, let me tell you what my wife said about this, so, yeah. So, yeah, um, this credit is due. Okay. Uh, number eight, as I know it's an informational item, but Anita asked me to read this into the record because it helps painter. The Reserve is holding a public meeting on Wednesday, December thirteenth, at five P M. at the Reserve Office, that's at one oh eight Island Drive, East Point, for anyone to wish to comment on their ten-year management plan. Not to be confused, on Thursday, the following day, there will be an advisory meeting on the same management plan. Chairman Jones and Mr. Mark Urinton, your planner, they've been invited to be sit on that advisory meeting. The, the Wednesday thirteenth meeting information, including a link to the draft management plan, that's on the county's website for the.
Be sure, be sure we, Chairman Jones, or you, or Mark, or whoever, make sure we got a seat at that table.
Yes, yes, they both do. So, I just needed to help Anita out with that. Item nine is an update from the fire department, Leonard Village, St. James Leonard Village, um, on ten, Triumph meeting, um, so, on Friday, Commissioner Amerson, Mrs. Erin Griffith, Ted, uh, Mr. Kirshenbaum, the CEO of the, uh, CEO, the chairman of the A O E D, uh, board, Mr. Andrew Hartman, who are representatives from, um, Centric, and I will meet with Triumph staff, along with representatives from other, how do I, other agencies, let me just leave it at that, um, to discuss funding for runway extension and other airport economic opportunities on Friday. Again, on Friday, December eighth, we're gonna meet at the airport for that meeting, and then we'll update the board at the next meeting on the results of that, so. So another Triumph meeting to try and find funding commissioners for the airport to help economic development. Commissioner Amerson, you have that look.
Yeah, I'm just curious, do we have a handle on how many agencies you're gonna be here, because they've kind of they're kind of watering it down.
Tell you what, I'll ask Cory for an updated list, uh, this afternoon and forward it to you. Forward it to the board, I'm sorry, forward it to all you guys, so you guys are aware of who's gonna be there.
Don't matter how many, yeah, all this, you can handle them.
No, I'm just saying, it just seems like they're watering it down with a bunch of agencies, and getting everybody in there talking in circles, and nothing's gonna get done.
Keep them focused.
Yeah, look at that.
That's what they're gonna try to do.
Uh, pardon my report, is your clerk, she submitted the twenty twenty-four Helen, oh, ho- holiday calendar um, for courts and for the county. Um, and as some of your department heads this morning talked to you about their, their holiday, I'm sorry, their Christmas and New Year's Day holiday schedule, that's also my report, and that's gonna be on the website this afternoon. Speaking of this afternoon, don't forget, you have a workshop here at five o'clock to discuss, uh, St. George, uh, golf carts and low-speed vehicles on St. George Island. There is no real, uh, uh, agenda per se, like a list of things. What we, what this board wants to do, which we've learned works out the best, let's hear from the public what they like, what they don't like, what I'd like to see happen, and then from there, you know, we could come up with ideas and plans, you know, to forward, focus that and, and proceed with, you know, whatever we want to do as it relates to golf carts and low-speed vehicles on St. George Island. Uh, and as the chairman said to me, there's a possibility you do it here, it's gonna spread to your other districts where you allow golf carts, you know, too. So just, we could be aware of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I probably won't be able to attend this meeting this afternoon, but I'll be here for when you need a vote.
That's fine, that's fine. I just hope you can start.
The evening, the evening's real bad on me. Morning's all too bad.
Imagine, and your next meeting is two weeks from today at nine A M.
All right, uh, I will say too, Mr. Moro, it's completely out of me. So, at last meeting, we, we, uh, shared a letter with the board. We'll have that too, you, Commissioner Anderson, before the meeting Friday, to, to go to the.
The response, the final, the final commander.
Response, and, and, and the appropriate documents to go to all those different agencies. We'll have that to you before that meeting. Anything else for Mr. Moro?
I sure hope not. She has that look.
Uh, go with us.
I get what you have to say.
Okay.
No time like public time.
No time like public time.
All right, Turner Shulker, you up next?
All right, I do not have any action items on my report, but just some of the non-action items, promotional items. Uh, the last meeting, the board had directed me to review a, uh, a lease for what's been referred to as the helicopter teehanger. I got in touch through Mr. Moro and with Centric's representative, Andrew Hartman. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, turns out that they, they actually were not using technically a lease agreement. They were using license agreements for all the teehangers, and I won't get into all the technical reasons with the difference between a lease and a license. Uh, but it turns out that the license agreement for the teehanger, uh, they do not have a, a written lease, as far as they know. All of the teehanger leases or licenses have expired effective October thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Some of them expiring sometime prior to October, uh, thirty, thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, but with that information, I, I contacted the chairman of the airport advisory board, told him that appears to me, based on Centric's information, that there are no written agreements of any kind for any of the teehangers, and for the airport advisory board to review the matter, make whatever recommendation they think is appropriate for this board to consider. So unless there's any further instructions from the board, I'm going to wait to hear back from the airport advisory committee. Uh, item number two is just to inform the board and the public that the public hearing on the ordinance for the board to consider increasing the voting requirements for the height limitation has been rescheduled from December the fifth, uh, to December nineteenth at eleven oh five A M. in this room at thirty-four Fourth Street, Apalachicola, Florida. Uh, just an update on the possible exchange of land with Duke Energy. Mr. Moro covered most of what was already in, in my report regarding the tower. Uh, the, the short story is, we're still waiting on Duke to give me a date, time, and place to have a meeting to discuss the exchange. And then the, the last information item on my report, uh, is the draft resolution for the board to consider abandoning all of the thirty-foot alley in block three east, St. George Island Golf Beaches, unit one, as that plan is recorded in plaque book two, page seven, Franklin County, Florida. The public hearing, uh, on your consideration of that, uh, resolution of abandonment will be heard on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, at eleven A M. in this room at thirty-four Fourth Street, Apalachicola, Florida. And with that, that finishes my report, and if the board has any questions for me.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Return to shore. All right, that'll wrap that part up. Uh, Mr. Moro, I see on the agenda you have it published, that we're just gonna recess. Since we know Commissioner Sanders is not here, is it gonna be an appropriate rest to Commissioner comments now?
Yeah, it probably would.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Um, Jim, can I circle back to Michael right quick? Um, there is one thing, I have my notes and I forgot, but, uh, we talked, uh, before about the hospital board, uh, meetings being Zoomed or videoed, uh, and I, I'm sure the other commissioners have gotten videos. I would like access to videos where I don't have to have someone send it to me, I can access it myself, and I can't figure out how to do it. I mean, am I doing something wrong, or?
No, sir.
But, um, uh, that, that should be something that should be available not only to the public, but to the, you know, of board of county commissioners. So I'd, I'd just like for you to try to reach out and see what we need to do. If we need to set something up, help them set it up.
Okay.
Uh, it's just, just a lot easier, uh, I, I, I'm speaking for myself, it's a lot easier to sit there and listen, watch, and I can get a better grasp on what's going on, uh, as far as the hospital goes.
I agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree. Um, I, I also heard, though, I don't know if it's true, that they weren't not going to continue to video the meetings or record the meetings.
Well, from what I heard, there was a motion made to, uh, and it, it just never got a second, to, um, um, accommodate a better Zoom. Are, are they gonna shut the video down? Is that what you're?
I'd have to go back and look at my correspondence that I had, um, but that's the impression I got.
Well, we don't want that.
I could be incorrect, just make sure.
We'd like to continue, just, let's make it better, not shut it off. That's what I'm, just simplify.
I, I think they were, yeah, I think they switched platforms from Zoom to Teams. I don't, I think they couldn't, and this is based on what I asked, and, um, in Teams, they didn't know how to record, so I said, well, you know, it'd be a lot better if you can record them and pose them, so they're thinking about going back to Zoom again and finding a way to record. I, I offered my assistance to set it up like how I set up this room, basically, you know? I even have a few extra tablets that I could give them for different angles, if that helps.
For the hospital board. For the hospital board meeting.
For the hospital board meeting, yes, ma'am.
And they didn't take you up on it?
Well, not yet. They were walking on it, so, uh, yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, you said, yeah.
I'm just, you know, trying to.
They haven't yet.
Trying to be the peacemaker, yeah, not yet.
Yes, so before we recess, I want to take a moment to press on.
Well, I'm, with Commissioner Amerson?
Oh, you don't? Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
I appreciate it.
Uh, Ms. Donald, can you please come for me? Ms. Donald Butterfield, and I won't still, I'll let her do the talking. She's, uh, been doing, uh, in the District One seat on the hospital board, and she's, she's gonna have to resign that position. It's all good.
Join the crowd, Miss Donna.
It's all good, Ms. Donald.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, that's a apologize, well.
We, uh, my husband and I have health issues. And we have to move to Tallahassee. And, uh, I so much appreciated the appointment of the Williams Board. I told my doctor his diagnosis had to be wrong, because I had things I wanted to do. Um, at any rate, I appreciate the support. Oh, shut up, Michael. I truly appreciate the support that all of you have given me. You've been respectful. You didn't always agree with me, but you let me talk when I thought it was important. And I'm gonna miss this advocacy work that I've been doing for fifteen years.
Hang in there, it's gonna be a good fight, but a necessary one for Franklin County.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Donna.
Thank you, Miss Donna.
Thank you, Miss Donna.
But, you know, Donna, just like what Commissioner Amerson just referred to, to Zoom, you're always part of us, you're always watching, we'll listen to you anytime you have to talk.
It don't matter if you live in Tallahassee, we got people in everywhere, it's on them boards.
I can Zoom, but I can't vote.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Miss Donna, for your, for your willingness to serve. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my, my thing about Zoom is I can't Zoom. I put, put. You know, it's not Zoom, it's put, put, because it's in and out, in and out, put, put.
Do we need to do anything else before we recess?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're still under Commissioner comments, right?
No, we have not.
Oh, are we doing Commissioner comments? Did we decide to, anyway, I can wait, I can wait.
No, unless Commissioner, if Commissioner Sanders has nothing to say, not a Commissioner comments, we could link with that.
Did you have something you wanted to say in the Commissioner comments today?
You're not gonna be here.
Because the way he's got on the agenda, it's the last.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm mad now.
You're not gonna be here.
No, yeah, I can't tell.
Why are we getting that easy?
But, but we got, we got Ms. uh, Ms. Jessica Ward wants to say something.
I'll wait till Commissioner comments, unless you wanna hear what I have to say.
I wanna hear what you got to say, because I have a great reason.
Okay, so, uh, you know, there's been a lot of, uh, social media posts about the gas prices in Franklin County, and how is it, how is it okay for one, a gas station to charge more money than the gas station across the street? So, between the chairman and I making phone calls, we've ascertained that it, basically, we have no control over that. So, in a nutshell, um, the Department of Agriculture has a Bureau of Standards that's kind of under them that controls all that. And the lady that I spoke with said, they get calling, calls all the time about convenience stores close to airports that charge more money for fuel than one down the street, and she said that's because people go fill up their rental car, and that store's gonna charge more to make more money. They have no control or regulation or jurisdiction over the setting the price of fuel, because there's no cap on gas prices in the state of Florida. Um, they have no control. Now, if it's a state of emergency and there's a, a price gouge, and then, yes, they would step in. But other than that, they have no control, and I've talked to Mauricio, the bureau chief, I can't think of his last name, I don't know if his first name's Mauricio, his last name's Mauricio, but nonetheless, he flat out says, I said, so we can't hold any of these convenience stores accountable for having their prices jacked up versus the others? He said, nope, there's, there, we have no regulatory jurisdiction over that. It's, if a gas station across the streets, street wants to charge three dollars a gallon, and one, uh, uh, across the way wants four dollars a gallon, then that's fine, because they base it on how much fuel is pumped. So, the, the store that's got the higher, uh, amount of fuel pumped, they're gonna charge more because they know they can make more money. It's, it's not a good way of doing it, but the gas stations themselves. It's it's not a good way of doing it, but the gas stations themselves have the right to set their own price, and they have no control over that. We have no control over that. We can't hold them accountable since they're county gas stations. But the Mauricio guy told me that it's up to the consumer to pick and choose where they want to get fuel. Now, the problem with that, as Chairman was stating earlier, is that's our taxes that the, when somebody fills up with fuel in our county, we get that money to go towards infrastructure for roads. So it hurts us in the long run because nobody wants to fill up fuel locally because they can get it cheaper in Gulf County or Wackola County or Bay County. So it's a it's a detriment to us. Um, but unfortunately, they seem like they don't really care about that.
So the gas station owner can come and fuss at the board for not paving the road in front of their gas station, but they don't realize by the high prices they're charging, they're hurting themselves and not allowing you the money to pave in front of their road.
Correct. That's correct.
Because somebody like me, if I'm in Panama, I'm gonna fill up at Sam's Raceway or something like that. Okay, I got you, Commissioner.
Yeah. So that's just something that we found out, and I hate that there's really nothing we can do about it, but there's nothing we can do about it, unfortunately. You just have to pick choose what gas station you want to go to.
That's been an ongoing thing for many, many years, Jessica, and it's just ain't no answer to it. And it's just the way I tell people is, do you want your roads paved in Franklin County? If you want your roads paved in Franklin County, then buy gas in Franklin County. And and it goes by district, you know what I mean? Like, like, you care about, my district's got three, three gas stations where your district's got none.
Mine has, uh, none.
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 Except for cheap nuts. Cheap nuts in your district, okay. Well, you don't have none.
So you don't get.
How should you get money in her account, though?
She's gonna be fucking on that now, y'all. But, no.
Who wants to build a gas station in District Five?
There you go.
Well, I know there was, right before I retired, there was a lady that contacted me. She was quite rude with me. She's no longer there, but she was down in Alligator Point. And, uh, she no longer lives there. And she just couldn't figure out why we didn't pave our roads with Abilom tax money. I said, because that's not the use of Abilom tax money. It's it's paving roads. And she just couldn't figure it. And I said, well, when you came over from Tallahassee to come down here, where'd you buy your gas from? Did you go to Landark and buy it at Landark Fana? No, they bought it in Wackola County. So I said, you helping Wackola case their roads? And it, I mean, it's something that can get quite controversial if you let it get on. But that's the reason why I'm shutting my mouth right now.
Well, in in the spirit of keeping things the way they are, Commissioner Anderson, the the Seahawks Boys Basketball Team are currently three and oh, and ranked in the top ten in the state. So even though they've started off the season on the road on purpose, they've still been winning. And they go, Jefferson County's the next one on the clock Thursday night, and you get to travel with their gym and make them feel bad about playing basketball with us.
Do me one favor, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When you hit on the table, that.
You mean a little nerve?
Oh, I didn't even think about that. I, that was completely, sorry.
There's somebody else that used to hit on the table, talk to the very end.
That was usually to make us shut up and say, stop.
No, he's ready to go.
But, uh, yeah, but, yep, sure are. They're doing well. You need to have us before we recess.
Five o'clock, y'all.
All right. We're recess.